I didn't know it was the sixth episode.
Yeah, it's been Sunday through Thursday last weekend this week.
What happens if you're recording? You can't just go and think you're gonna... It keeps bumping forward. So you have to go back and watch the one you missed.
Okay, good evening and welcome. Call to order the meeting of the Board of Selectmen. It's just seven o'clock now. And first order of business is a meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stotin Fund. So we'll call to conference Diane Ferrari from the Milton Residence Fund. Good evening Diane.
Good evening. Thank you for having me.
So Diane, you're here to talk to us about a request for staffing of a part-time assistant for assistance to the annual gift holiday program.
Right. The gift program began, as the letter says, many, many years ago with a handful of children. And now, the last few years Mara has been my assistant.
Mara, why don't you come and join us?
This is Mara Dard.
Yeah, good evening Mara.
Thank you. She's actually a lawyer, but I'm very lucky to say she's been my assistant over these last few years. And how that happened was she walked in to volunteer three or four years ago, and I said, "This is just getting too big. I've gotta find another group to take this over." And Mara said, "Oh, I'll help you." And so she's been helping me ever since. But over the last two years, I've asked my Board of Trustees to come up with some funds for Mara because, you know, the hours... We figured it's about 200 hours at least between September...
A week.
Not a week. Please.
I'm serious.
It's a lot of hours. It's many hours. Starts in September. We've already met about the Christmas program. It goes through our thank yous being finished in January. And it's, you know, thanks to Mara being here with me. And the liaison position at the Milton Public Schools, Marty McKenna O'Keefe, the three of us put our heads together and really discovered two years ago a really much greater need that the teachers and the guidance people were spending a bit of their own money at holiday times to give gifts to students. And we said, "We can help because we have good roots in the community." And groups like Milton Helping Hands volunteered to buy gift cards. And we, basically, I think we might have provided like $6,000 in gift cards for middle school and high school students to be distributed through the guidance figure.
Is that accurate?
Yes. Accurate. So that was just another step up, but something that the school really responded to and said they just felt it was such a need for these students who... There are things that they need that their families can't provide. So, you know, although we're saying it's the holiday program, Mara and I were talking, it's... The holiday program has really become a long stretch, and it's the outreach for our Milton Residence Fund. It's how we meet new people in the community, and it's how we find more people wanting to donate. And I've had not only financial donations, but in-kind donations. In the last few months, I've given away two bicycles to a family where the mom can no longer drive for medical reasons, and her two high schoolers can bike to school. So it provides more than just holiday giving. And it's so important. And Mara spent a lot of time meeting with the PTOs. And we have mainly food pantry families, but not exclusively anymore, and about 250 children. We'd like to have you come over and see the church next door, First Parish, filled to the brim with gifts. We'll let you know because it's pretty moving.
I've been there.
You've been there, yep, many years ago, and it's bigger now.
Well, I think we'd all enjoy that Diane. And I think that the work that you guys do is evident, and I think, you know, it's really making a difference. And so we have a motion before us, you know, if this board is so inclined to support, which I believe is a good thing for us.
So I'll move that we approve the request of the Milton Residence Fund in the amount of $5,000 to fund the assistant position for the 2017 annual holiday gift program, although it sounds like it's even broader than just the gift program.
It really is. Thank goodness, it is.
Second. Any discussion?
Just, I think it might be helpful if, as we get a little closer to the holiday season, maybe if Diane or Mara or both of you come back in and just get it, the message out again and before people... Because I know last year, I was one of them who kind of found out about this after the fact. And the Council on Aging does a nice toy collection for a lot of children who are in need. But this program really is even broader than that because I think it targets the high schoolers and the older kids as well. So maybe the more we can do...
I agree.
At one of our televised meetings to get the word out, closer to November would be good.
We'd be happy to do that. We know that some of the churches in town do My Brother's Keeper and Toys for Tots, and they've said, "Well, why don't you ask us?" Without Mara, I couldn't handle any more than what we have coming in. But with Mara's assistance and with, you know, knowing we have that time to coordinate, we'd be happy to. And I'd love to do that because, as I said, not just at Christmas time, but it plants the seed and it gets people aware of the program. And we could do, always do more. I mentioned to Mara today, I had called Glenn Pavlicek to ask him how many students in Milton are on free lunch because I was curious, how many are from needy families? And he didn't have the figures. I caught him, you know, by the... Just by chance. But he said roughly maybe 14% of the students, so conservatively, 600 or more students are in the free lunch program, which means they're in families that are feeling the strain financially.
Yeah, no question.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Dan.
Oh, no, go right ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, we know that there are a lot of families that, you know, Milton, you know, is a town that has, you know, a lot of families that need a lot of help. And obviously, the work that you guys are providing is giving us a little bit of a boost. And we want to be a part of that, too, here. So we want to be able to share that message and get that out the door as much as possible.
Thank you. Thank you.
You do great work. You know that I know that.
Thank you very much.
A lot of people don't realize the X's and O's that you make happen. From fuel assistance in the dead of winter to meals, to people who can't get out of the house, to people who just... That every dollar is real, real money to them. And without you, they'd really be diastrites without you and the support you get, so...
Well, I'd like to say without, you know, First Parish Church and the incredible endowments they've been given and invested carefully, and they've really done a great job. I know at the last meeting, we sort of had a kind of a, just a general meeting, but basically, they have to watch that they can preserve the principle of those funds and not overspend so that we can continue doing the good work. And I think our missions, the Governor Stotin mission, and the Milton Residence Fund and the community funds at First Parish, the mission is the same. So it makes sense for us to be connected.
That's great. Well, we had a motion, a second, and so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Diane, Mara, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
See you around Thanksgiving.
Yeah, thank you. And I will come back, for sure.
Thanks.
Yeah, be in touch with us.
Thanks so much.
Thank you for coming in. Nice to meet you Mara.
Thank you.
Thanks Diane.
So our next item under the meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stotin Fund is approval from the Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital Milton request for donation. Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital Milton provides free care to residents who cannot afford it. The Governor Stotin Fund has contributed throughout the years to help defer these costs to the hospital. For FY '16, that's from October 1st, 2015, through September 30th, 2016, unreimbursed care totaled $173,908. So, you know, a lot of families who couldn't afford to get the help that they deserved, you know, Beth Israel stepped up. And so they've requested $10,000 from the Governor Stotin Fund.
All right. So I'll make a motion to approve the request of the Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital Milton in the amount of $10,000 to help provide free medical care to disadvantaged residents of the town.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item is approval for the Milton Community Food Pantry donation request. The Milton Food Pantry's dairy voucher program allows 143 families, 483 residents, to purchase milk and eggs at the Milton Food Mart. In 2016, the Milton Community Food Pantry paid $16,357.53 for the program. So they're requesting a donation of $15,000 from the Governor Stotin Fund this year to underwrite the cost of the program.
This is a very worthy expenditure. So I'll move that we approve the request of the Milton Community Food Pantry in the amount of $15,000 to help fund its dairy voucher program.
Second.
Any discussion? Like you said, it is a very worthy program, and obviously, 483 residents getting, you know, milk and eggs, that's a big deal.
Yeah.
And so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and that will conclude a meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stotin Fund. Make a motion.
Move that we adjourn the meeting of the Governor Stotin Fund.
Second.
Okay. Adjourn. Okay, I'll call to order the Board of Selectmen meeting now. First item on our agenda is the review and approval of minutes. There are no minutes to approve at this time, so we'll move on to item number three, confirm future meeting dates. The board will meet again on October 10th, as well as prior to the October 2017 special town meeting on October 23rd, 24th, and 26th, if needed, and into the following week if necessary. The board's also going to attend Master Plan Implementation Committee on October 16th. So we've got a pretty busy month here in October, and that'll be to discuss the Milton Landing and Wharf area. So I think what we'll do is, as we move forward, we'll... Emily, if you could just reach out to us, and we can confirm some future meeting dates as we get towards November?
Sure.
That'd be great. Item number four is citizen speak. Do we have anybody tonight for citizen speak? Okay, seeing that there is none, we'll move to item number five, a discussion related to the East Milton Deck project. If we could call up Town Planner Bill Clark, that'd be great. Good evening, Bill.
You're cruising right along now, Mr. Chairman, tonight.
We're moving right along.
Right along.
Yeah, until now. So here we go. I wasn't able to make that meeting due to a personal family reason, but I watched the tape more than twice. I listened to the comments, the questions. I was able to relate to a lot of the residents and their concerns, you know, because everybody wants a great project. I think that, at the end of the day, we want to work together. We want to find ways to make sure that East Milton gets what they've always deserved. And, you know, but it's really for the whole town, too. You know, whether you're coming from any part of the town, coming into East Milton to use one of the businesses, or to work out, or to go grocery shopping, or do your insurance needs, I think it's very important that all those needs are met. And, you know, this project's been going on for a long time. I thought the meeting was very well-run by Katie. I thought you did a great job chairing that meeting last week. I think that a lot was learned. And, you know, we've got some decisions to make as we move forward, you know, as we've gotten good input. Bill, if you'd like to just kind of give us a little update from Howard Stein Hudson's perspective, I think that would be good as a follow-up today from some information that we received based upon the input that was gathered at the meeting.
Right. They did send us a couple of options for things that were talked about at the meeting. One of them was parking within the old right, the old roadway. There's some others where they talked about parking along Granite Ave and their reverse angle parking. They did look at parallel parking. Both of those, they're very concerned that rear-end accidents would be taking place because the cars are going, one, too fast, two, they don't expect anybody to be on that left-hand lane over on Granite Ave. They, at the same time, sent over a final design amendment. And with that document, they also sent a... Another option that they didn't have time to draw up, and that was to do rear-angle parking over on Bryant Ave. It would mean making the sidewalk bigger on the left-hand side because we already have parallel parking. It would actually push into the deck. The issue is, you'll be fighting Article 97, but you have the chance to do it at a later time by making the sidewalk bigger now. It's something for discussion at a later point, but something for thought process. The next steps here would be to sign the final design amendment, which are some changes to the contract that we had before. It also names the structural engineer, and it names the landscape architects that we'd be looking to do, use at the 75% level contract.
Why don't we open it up for discussion here on the board based upon what we learned last week?
You want to go last? I'll do whatever... Go ahead, Katie.
If you want to go first, that's fine.
No, go ahead, no. Because you've written a lot as well, so...
Well, I got some notes that I wrote mainly tonight before coming up to the meeting because the information from Howard Stein Hudson unfortunately only came over two hours ago. So, you know, that's not an awful lot of time to review it.
Right.
And really, ideally, we should have it a few days beforehand. So the big item for me, and I raised this at the meeting on the 13th, and I'm still very concerned about it. I don't think we've gotten Town Council's advice on this yet. What happened here is a week, at least I saw it a week before the September 13th meeting, Howard Stein Hudson proposed increasing the size of the park for the first time. I mean, no one had ever talked about increasing the size of the park, meaning extend the park over the Adams Street, the closed section of Adams Street on the deck. And that's really the exact opposite of what the 4F plan had been, which would have had a bigger parking lot and a smaller park. So that was a, I would call that a material change in the design. And the question that came up, I brought it up, but there were also residents of East Milton who brought this up at the meeting. And the issue there is, if you, if we were to do that, and if we were to expand and increase the parks, what's now the closed section of Adams Street becomes a green space, does that convert non-Article 97 land, the street, into Article 97 land, which is the park? And if it does, that would really tie the hands of a future Board of Selectmen, future Planning Director of Town, Administrator, anyone in the town down the road, five years, 10 years, 50 years from now, who's trying to either reopen Adams Street because circumstances have changed over in the square, or put in some parking there. And then you're looking at, okay, now we've got an expanded park, and now we've got to go to the state legislature, we need a two-thirds vote. We've jumped through a lot of hoops under Article 97, of the Massachusetts Constitution, in order to go back to what we originally had, which was a street going over the deck, Adams Street. So I know that we asked for Town Council's opinion. Mike, is there any update?
No, I haven't gotten a word back from John yet. He was looking at it.
And I think getting something in writing from him is really going to be important so that future generations...
I agree.
Even somebody five years from now.
We do need to know that. I mean, there's no question that is an impact that would be, it would totally end any possibilities. So go ahead, Richard.
So if you go back and look at, and we arrived at this, and as I've written to both you and I've said publicly, there's a lot I've learned in this board. I'm the newest member, and I've learned a lot in six months in everything from airplane noise to affordable housing to so many issues outside of the parameters I've been involved in. But this is one that I really put a lot of time into. And I've studied it and researched, and going back, and, you know, we had a plan where we thought we were going to be able to increase parking in the square. It was something that I think the residents wanted, the businesses clearly wanted, from a traffic and pop, for that series we hired, Howard Stein, is we all wanted it. Clearly, the opinion of Matt Beat and then Federal Highway trumps that. But my interpretation, reading that letter in respect to what you commented about, they never said anything about converting to 97. They just said, "You can do what you want with it." Their only concern is the part that's been designated on Article 97, which is the existing park. So I think that what John Flynn will probably come back and say is, "You can do what you want with it." And I think you could, the town could do it in a way that we don't have to make it part of the park. You could still plant grass there. It's your, it's our property to deal with it without making it, and make it for use of park. And if some future board has to cut through it 20, 30 years from now, it's still yours. It's under your control. You're not giving up your rights. And I would not, I'm not suggesting that we should.
No, and I think we need a legal opinion to that effect because, from what I understand, the Town Planning Director asked Howard Stein Hudson about this after the meeting, and was talking about maybe an easement, and their opinion was that would not be...
It's a non-starter.
Yeah.
I don't think you'd need an easement, though. It's already yours.
No, they own it.
Oh, they own it, okay, yeah. I get that.
Mastodot owns it. I think the issue about going back and asking the legislature...
Because it's an overpass.
But going back to the over, going, going back to the state legislature, it's a hurdle. But it's not an insurmountable hurdle if there's a greater benefit to the community and to the region. It should not be, it should not preclude you from at least seeking that. Whether you, if you don't like it, that's fine.
Well, it's a hurdle, Bill, but there's also been talk in other contexts that if you want to use Article 97 land, you might have to replicate parkland elsewhere. And 50, if that's the case, 50 years from now, you know, who knows whether the town's going to have other land available that we could convert to parkland.
But that was the intent.
It's not Article 97 land now, though. I'm not counting.
The intent, right, the intent was to replicate Article 97 land for what is now roadway. It was our intent to replicate one-to-one, but they don't want that. They want something different.
And I still think, and I've said this in what I wrote to you the other day, that I think it's in the hands of the town administrator to, if we, if we, if Adams Street remains closed, and from my point of view, there were three concerns, and somehow it's become backwards. The safety of vehicles, pedestrians, and people in the square has to be number one. Parking is number two, and the park is number three. Somehow, the park has become number one. Parking number two, and safety three.
No, I disagree. I don't think the park has become, well, the park has become number one, radio to Howard Stein Hudson, but not this board.
No, 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 no. Let me come out, so I'm just being like in the people...
In general.
Because I think we're all in the agreement.
It's the park, the park, the park, and the safety part afterwards.
Yeah, I think safety has to be first. I think we all agree to that.
I think we all agree to that.
Without question, I think, you know, and from my perspective, you know, it's got to be accessible, it's got to be safe, and we've got to connect, you know, the east and the west side together so that young families and seniors and whoever can get across the street in a very safe way. You know, and I think that, you know, we adopted at town meeting last May, annual town meeting, a speed limit by law at 25 miles an hour, where we could implement that into the square at some point in time, and especially in the neighborhoods to deter the cut-through traffic. We want to make that whole area, as Richard said, safe. I mean, that's first and foremost. Slow people down, allow people accessibility, and make it efficient, you know, and make it so that, so that people can come and go as they please. And the focus would be on Milton people, you know? I mean, let's face it, you know, should we ever be able to adopt in that area, that speed limit, we could, I'm sure that the chief would be, would be very open, I know he's always said he has been, and the former chief has too, into traffic enforcement. And I think that that's, that's got to be of paramount importance. I think that, you know, we have to focus on that, and I think that our decision has to be based on that first.
I think we're all in agreement that traffic, that safety issues and the traffic signalization is, safety is the highest priority, and the signalization is the first use for the funding. And I agree with you, Richard, the parking, it would be second, and the park would be third. What I'm, what I am concerned about, though, is I think we need Town Council's opinion on whether this would become Article 97 land. We should at least go into this with our eyes wide open so that we know what the, what the implications are. There were, no, parking, the reason I continue to bring up parking, there were four parallel parking spaces on Adams Street, so we've lost those. I happened to watch the Board of Appeals meeting the other night because they had a very interesting proposal before them. It was for the mixed use...
410 Granite Ave?
Yes, for Granite Ave, 410 Granite Ave, for mixed use, six condos and retail on the ground floor. Well, they denied the use variance on that. But what was very interesting was there was an orthodontist in the office next door, Dr. Maloney, and one of the first issues she got up and raised was parking. And she said, parking, she described it as a problem, a concern, a reason, one of the reasons that she can't get a tenant into one of the first four spaces that she has. But she also said that at one time, there were three parking spaces on Granite Ave in front of her building. And because of the right turning lane from Granite onto Adams at the fire station, those three parking spaces were taken away. So we've lost three there. We're going to lose the four that were on the deck.
Those are already gone, so, right, okay.
But if we can put parking in there, which some, a smaller amount than what was originally planned, we'd at least gain some of them back. And we will have parking on Bryant, and there are other options. But I think that we have to do the due diligence, and I'm glad to see that Howard Stein Hudson followed up on this and gave us some drawings. One of the questions I had, and I'm glad you're here tonight, Bill, oh, this is well over a year ago, so you might not have it on the top of your head, but at one point, there was talk about whether the sidewalks in the park were really part of the park, or whether the dimensions of the sidewalks could be adjusted. Because I, I know there's a sidewalk at least on one side of the closed section of Adams. I think there's one on both sides.
I think it's both sides.
Sidewalk on both sides.
Yep.
And I think the, so one of the things that Howard Stein Hudson is saying is they can, they're proposing, well, you could do five parallel spaces here, but it's a difficult three-way, three-point turn on the end. If you can take out the parking, the sidewalk side, at least on one side, maybe on both sides, does that open it up for angle parking so that it is possible to get seven or eight spaces in there? And I thought, when we talked about this over a year ago, the conclusion, but we should verify this, was that the sidewalks are not part of the park, so that we might have room to adjust some of those sidewalks.
You're talking about opening it.
Not opening Adams Street. Well, there's an awful lot of residents who want to open it, but I'm talking about using it for parking. Because I really think parking, for the small businesses, and I'm not, there's a lot of people who talk about Fitness Unlimited, and this whole project was for Fitness Unlimited. That's never been my major concern in that area. It's, because there's a, there's a big section on Granite Ave right across the street from them. It's the small business, it's the Peel Pizza, it's Grono and Christie, it's the House of Pizza, it's the Little Insurance Agency.
It is, yeah.
The little businesses over there that don't have the resources that an Abbey Park has or an Ovira has to arrange for parking in a bank or in one of the other locations to share it at night. So wherever we can fit in a few spaces that would impact and help some of those small businesses, and I think the Chamber would like to still, the Chamber of Commerce would like to see if we still can fit a small number of spaces. So, you know, Howard Stein Hudson looked at this, I'm glad they did. Unfortunately, we got this two hours ago, and I was in traffic on the way home, and really haven't analyzed this in any great extent, but it looks like they're raising some concerns with it. What I would like to see us do, Mr. Chairman, is to have the Planning Director tomorrow send this to the Chamber of Commerce, the Neighborhood Association, the Planning Board, the Master Plan Implementation Committee, there might be some others that we can think of, so that at least enough people see what the current designs are, there's full transparency about this. And send it with the email that came over from Howard Stein Hudson with all these bullet points saying, "This is why we don't think we can recommend these things."
I wouldn't do that yet till you know this is 100% feasible, because this was just kind of a idea they gave us tonight. I wouldn't say it was set in stone that they thought this was absolutely doable. That was my opinion.
Maybe they didn't.
I think they gave you the reason why they are not feasible in the email that...
They gave us the reason why they are not feasible, related to Article 97.
Why they would not recommend it. They're, they're saying, they're doable, but they do not recommend it.
Right.
Because they're, they're thinking of public safety first.
Right. But also, yeah, right, and they're talking about cars, you know, not having enough room to back out, and there could be some fender benders, and so there's concerns there. And also, there were concerns related to the Article 97 as well. But, yeah, you know, I would be in favor at, you know, once we get a little bit more detail on that, and, because we want to be transparent, we want to be collaborative, we want to get to the best project possible, you know?
As well. But I'd want to be, I want, because this just came...
But we got to get this moving. I mean, that's, in my opinion, this can't be, this can't be a week from now, two weeks[1688.66] from now. We got to get these answers really quick because this project has a timeline, and I think that's the other point of it. Look at, we can go back a few months ago where we talked about having a pilot program to open up Adams and collect data, you know. We weren't able to do it because of a street project. There's a lot of residents out there that would like it open, you know, but safety has to come first, and we need to make sure that whatever plan we have is safe and effective for residents to be able to travel to and from and across by foot and bike. And that's, it's really crucial. And, you know, I know a lot of people, you know, have a lot of ideas about the park and everything, but let's focus on, on this first. This is, as you said, Richard, that's the number one.
It is. We have to, the square is screaming for 21st century safety improvements in design. We have $2.2 million. We had, and I spent the past week going, a year ago, everything I read said we had $3.2 million. Well, we don't have $3.2, now we're down to $2.2, and we haven't even lifted a brick. I think we have to move forward on it. As I said the other day, I'm not 100% positive that all the technology is going to, and all the improvements is going to just be a magic wand and make our traffic issues go away. It's not, but it's going to be a vast improvement. Because right now, whether you talk to Jack Alaro, John Thompson, Chase has got to be running very quickly, Chief King, there's nothing they can do to make improvements in the square other than paint lines.
But I think we're all in agreement on that, Richard. I don't think anyone's saying anything different. We all know that the priority for the funding is the traffic signalization, and that's always been the priority for the funding. The only question here is the strip on Adams Street, the overwhelming majority of the residents who call me want it reopened. I know that there's, I know the Chamber doesn't, I know Howard Stein-Hudson doesn't recommend it. What I don't want is to lose is the option to do it down the road, whether it's 10 years from now or 50 years from now.
I agree with you.
I think we could do that and still start to move forward on this. I think we could do that.
That's right.
Absolutely, because all I'm suggesting is we get the information out to the public soon. The next opportunity for them to see this would be the December meeting. I'd rather they have a chance, at least some of the boards and committees, the Neighborhood Association, the Chamber, let them see it this week if we can get it to them this week, so that we might have, we might, that might produce a collective decision here as to what the right way to go. At the end of the day, maybe expanding the park over Adams Street is the only option we have, but I want to be sure we know going into it what town council's view is and whether the sidewalk, what the dimensions of the sidewalk can be changed.
We need to fully vet this, try to see how much parking we can get with this.
I agree. I do think, and I said this at the meeting, and I said this, and I wrote this to Michael, to me, there's a give and take here, and the horse trading, the person who's our rep is Michael, and you, David, is Chair. There has to be some give and take, there has to be, especially if we give up. Because ideally, my first thought when they said the, you know, it's not going to, parking poll plan's gone, A's gone, B's gone, Adams Street, you ought to do whatever, I'm like, oh, we'll just put the park on Adams. And in your mind, and I was thinking the way you were, like, oh, we'll just get 10, 15. It doesn't work that simple, because you got to get in, you got to get out, you've got, it's, it's not a natural turning, it's not designed for that.
And that was Howard Stein-Hudson's initial recommendation to us in February or March, was that we should try to do the eight to 10 spaces. That was their first thought. Ours was not that, but...
Like, I've listened to, like, I mean, and they, Arthur Doyle brought up good things, they addressed that in this email today, you know, parking on the left of Granite Ave, it's, it is dangerous. It's, increases jaywalking, people don't normally pull out from the left there on the northbound side. They definitely answered some things. One of the things that I, I have been impressed by Howard Stein-Hudson and Mastard is that no matter what we've sent to them, no matter how big, fast a fastball, or how much we've pressured them, and even residents saying, well, open it up, they never wave. And as I've said probably, I was the last one, as you know, when I was chairman, to weigh into this, and Tom Hurley was right. People don't like it now because it's, we took a three-month trial test, and it's been sitting there for five years, and it was never designed for that. And hence, with Waze and GPS, it just made it worse. But I still, I don't think opening is the smartest thing to do just from safety point of view for eastbound traffic coming from Dorchester, the double turning lane that you're going to lose on Granite Avenue, which is going to put pressure right back in those neighborhoods. That was one of the big releases that we got, big release we got. I just think that whatever house you have to do, get what you can out of it. And then we have to keep working on parking.
I agree, but this is a board decision.
Right, I agree.
It's a board decision to reopen or keep Adams Street closed, and I think this is the opportunity to vet it. Bill, on slide three, it looks like they've drawn, and they probably did this quickly, but it appears to me these angled parking spaces are backwards for Granite Ave. You know, there's no way somebody pulling in would pull in in that form.
It is backwards.
It would go, yep.
It is, yeah. It's a reverse angle parking.
Reverse angle, it's back in.
Now, you see, if you, if you were to stand and put your car in reverse and back out, you're looking over your shoulder, which you don't see that back.
Okay, I was, I thought they were drawing, okay, then maybe that's...
This way, I'm looking, and all I have to do is this.
All right, because that's not what it is further up Granite Ave near the Fitness Unlimited and the Fruit Center, it's, it's straight in.
But you have far more room on those spaces than you're going to gain here. Here, you're getting like, you're just getting enough to do it. There, on Granite Avenue, particularly once you get beyond Bassett Street, it gets even wider. It winds as you approach the Wood Street overpass. So that's why they call it a reverse angle.
But see, I would, I mean, I'm not a traffic design engineer, but wouldn't it be easier for somebody to pull in rather than back in and all that traffic on Granite Ave?
You're right, but get out.
It's getting out.
Get out of the space.
Right.
Now you're getting out, you're getting out into traffic, and everybody's in a hurry, and so you're trying to back out, and they don't expect it. They're expecting to go straight ahead. They're watching cars on the right, but they're not necessarily watching the left.
Yeah, this seems to me to be, it seems, would seem to be impossible to be able to...
It's not an easy concept.
Well, that's why...
That's why they're not recommending it.
That's why they weren't recommending it. They were, they were giving you options, you know.
I understand that, but the parallel one makes more sense than, than the angled parking here. The angled parking makes more sense up on Edge Hill and down and further on Granite, but the parallel, if we were to try to do it here, that would make more sense. And that's exactly what's right around the Boston Public Garden, is left side parking on...
Right, those parallel ones had the post office for reverse angle, too. The original plan had them for reverse angle.
You mean on Edge Hill?
A reverse, well, reverse angle, you pull into your space and you get out of the car. You're going to the back. You can put everything in your trunk, you're not going to get hit, you're right there at the curb. You open the door, and your kids don't run to the street, they go to the sidewalk. So there's a safety factor. Now, when you pull out of that space, instead of having to turn around and look in both directions, it's look straight ahead and look in both directions. It's a lot easier mechanism to do that.
All right, well, that's why, I think slide three just doesn't make an awful lot of sense. Slide one, though, the parking lot on Grant, on Adams Street itself, I think if we can make use of the sidewalk space, we might have an opportunity for angle parking. But that's, that's something Howard...
All the cars are going to get out, so it's going to be one way in, one way out.
That's what they propose.
It's a tough turn around.
It is.
Yes, and I mean, if it is, and this was open, this was a no-left turn, you couldn't turn left here, you had to go straight.
I understand, I remember that. But the issue here is if you can use some of the parking, do you need to do the three-point turn, or is there enough room for turning area at the end here? I don't know. I mean, there's a space up here that they haven't, I don't think that's parked, I think that's up near the traffic light, but...
And it goes one way. See, there's no way you can go out this way.
I'm not proposing to go this way. They're proposing to do a three-point turn up here at the end of this space.
They're proposing in and out right where you have Penns.
Right. No, down here, in and out, right?
No.
In Granite, out Granite.
Yeah, in and out Granite.
In and out Granite. Correct.
That's one of the reasons why we need this a few days in advance, because, you know, we're all kind of looking at this and trying to make some sense of it at the, having just seen it. But my point, Richard, was if we can widen this by using some of the sidewalk space, maybe it's not a three-point turn, maybe there's room for turn, I don't know. That's what they have to tell us.
A couple of things I saw from, from these, and I appreciate all the work that's been done by this board to, to get this to this point. A couple of slides, the reverse angle one, Katie, that you were talking about, you almost get double the spot you would get if you, if it was just parallel parking.
Yeah, I know.
I think they show, you know, five spots versus 12, and it's hard for the viewers to see this. So to your point, as soon as this board's ready, we'll, we'll get this out to, you know, Chamber of Commerce, Neighborhood Associations, MPIC, whoever needs to see it. The other thing is, is I see Howard Stein-Hudson listened in 2015 and added some of that work to the presentation to get it to a better product, a safer, more efficient flow through the square. And I, I see that they're trying to do it here. They listened to the comments from, from, from the group. I think there's some value engineering that still can be done, and a lot of people talked about the four crosswalks at the intersection of Boulevard and Bryant, how some of them won't get used. I'd like to see them go back to the table and take a look at that stuff. But ultimately, at the end of the day, and I face this in my previous capacity, City of Boston got a $15 million federal grant, and literally, the Transportation Department was arguing with the Public Works Department up until the 11th hour about whether you put a tree in there or you put a parking meter in there, and they almost lost the funding. So, again, I, I agree with everything that's going on at this table. I just, I caution everyone that December is, is right around the corner. We need to get this documentation into the right people's hands to vet it. Lot of good stuff going on around the table and has gone on in the 10 months I've been there with this project, so.
Now, can somebody remind me, is the December meeting, is that the 75% design?
Yes.
Okay, so, so there's that, and then there's the final design in the spring.
And I want to go back to what you just said, because I liked when Arthur Doyle suggested the parallel, you know, in my mind, similar to what exists on Bryant Ave between Edge Hill and Boulevard, I thought, hmm. And then you see in their ass, they wrote right in here. They don't like it, and they don't recommend it, people don't expect parking on the left. And now you would have vehicles stopping on both the left and the right of Granite Avenue making parking maneuvers, which would lead to an increase in rear-end crashes. Because we all know, the people who do use Granite Ave northbound, particularly in the AM commute, once they cross that Granite Ave intersection, if they can, they want to accelerate, which goes back to the same argument when Adams Street Deck was open. Once you cross St. Agers and Wood Street, it's a straight shot, and, and the goal is to try and mostly heading towards Quincy or Father, is to get us across Granite and Adams as fast as you can. And the, and the rotary motion forces defeats that. I'm going to say, I know it's not perfect. It's not perfect, but I think we need to...
Yeah, it isn't. It isn't, but, but we do have a timeline, we have money that's allocated here, and we need to make some decisions sooner than later. And so I think that getting that information, Bill, as soon as possible, would be great. Also, getting an answer from town council, and then, you know, getting that information that we do get out to the boards and committees so that they can, they can weigh in, because we want to get input again from people.
Our meeting is the 10th, which I think is a Monday or night, right?
Tuesday night.
Tuesday night.
Tuesday.
So if we, I mean, ideally, we should have town council's opinion by the Friday before, in writing, you know, so that we have something in the records to show what the view at the time was, and...
Would it help to have Howard Stein-Hudson here as well to explain some of the idiosyncrasies that we just received today?
I think I might.
Yeah, I'd like to have them here.
And I hear, like, one of my neighbors who wrote, went back and forth, he wrote along, written back and forth, he wrote a long one to me today, and people bring up the fire station and the operation of the fire station and this and that. There are, there are arguments in every aspect of this. There truly are. But I got to go back to, we hired Howard Stein-Hudson, Mastard's been involved in this, the, no one, none of those entities has ever argued for us to try to sway us away from this plan, not one. And I'm, I'm going to like try to figure out every type of curve I could to make them do it, and they don't. And the more that I stand and look at it, and the more that I look at the traffic flow, and the more that I see the timeline, and there's $2.2 million, I think we need to start moving forward. Because if we started another design, we lose our timelines, where would we get another quarter of a million dollars for new design? Would we have to, would it go on our backs? Would it come out of the $2.2 million? What does that do to the project as a whole? I just, I just don't think we can wait much longer.
I agree, I agree with you. The reason, the reason I'm suggesting we get this out to a lot of people is to accelerate this so that we don't have people seeing it for the first time in December.
I'd like to see this board...
Well, I think we need to wait until December, I agree.
No, I'd like to see this board make a vote on October 10th, if that's okay with you, with you guys. I'd like to come to a voting decision on, on October 10th.
A vote on what? On whether to reopen Adams Street or whether to go forward with the design or...
Go forward with the design, yep.
At least all of the, I, I mean, I don't think we have to do the park part of it, but at least the traffic design and the flow, what the money is there for.
Yeah, we have to move forward on that aspect of this project.
I think it's a matter of whether we have, whether we know whether, closing, our town council's opinion, whether...
Correct.
Moving the park over this point...
Because we have to prepare for it one way or another. We have to be prepared to deal with it. I agree.
Right, well, that, I mean, that may determine what my vote will be on it, because if, if we're going to tie the hands of a future, of the town down the road, I think that's a consideration that we're going to...
And that's why it's so important to get that, that information from town council to figure out exactly where we stand on that, and then so that we're able to make, move forward and make a decision, you know, a, a real decision on where we're going with this project and, and just get it going.
And so in the meantime, I think we need to hold this first final design amendment, Bill, that you just referenced, because it says right on page one, the town is determined they will not be able to pursue a design that proposes new parking on the deck. And that's very much dependent on what we can do with Adams Street. So I think...
Well, I don't think they've seen that, though. Who's that from?
This came over today from Howard Stein-Hudson. I haven't read it, it just came over two hours ago. It's a pretty long document.
38 pages, yeah.
So, it's with the, it's with the same email.
Okay. All right. I've read so many things on this, I'm dizzy, I've read so many things, I just...
Well, you know, take into account, too, the potential Falcone proposal that's going to be before, is at some point, the, the one that was just filed that the Board of Appeals did not grant the variance, the use variance for other potential future development of the square down the road. It's possible 15 years from now, there may be a real need to reopen Adams Street based on what the square might look like or what other projects might happen there, or what the traffic flow is looking like at the time. So we need to keep our options open on that.
I agree with you in protecting, you know, whatever, using the term horse trading, whatever we do to protect our options as far as Adams Street, if it does, if we vote to keep it closed. And going back to the Falcone project, I think it's just become that much more because we thought there was going to be a 25-space release here. We thought, you know, 25 spaces was going to be a big relief, and, and I know, you know, the two big things in the square, the greatest pressure on parking, on daily parking, it's not Falcone, it's not Peel, it's not, it's two places.
Oh, I know that...
And then what's the second? Post office. That's the core, right?
Understood, but...
Biggest thing.
All of that impacts the small businesses.
Right, right. So going forward, though, we need to look forward, the project is finding more parking.
I think there's a question about that.
We have a business order, we have a business order on Granite Ave coming to tell the Board of Appeals, you know, I, I can't get, parking is a big problem, and I can't rent my space, and we're hearing it from the other small businesses, so I...
I think we're all committed, you know, you know, to getting to a good project here, and, you know, we just have to get those answers, and, you know, but I'd like to see this board on October 10th, you know, make some, some decisions here, okay, so that we can, we can get along, because this is, it's overdue, I think a lot of work's been put into this, and, you know, our community deserves it at the end of the day, so. Well, thanks again, Bill, for coming in, and...
Can we bring Howard Stein in on the 10th, and then anything else that they... Yeah, maybe you can email him, Katie's, and then we can get, make town council realize that there's an urgency to this.
Yeah, I think we need to give him a deadline for what we need.
We'll invite him on the way home.
Okay. Thank you again. Thanks.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay. Item six on our agenda tonight is discussion of the October 2017 special town meeting articles. I know, Michael, you'll be attending the planning board meeting on Thursday night. You should be talking about some of their articles.
Yes. I attended the warrant committee meeting last Monday. They got a lot of very good work done in a short amount of time. I appreciate them. For those of you that haven't seen it, it's a relatively new board. I think there's eight new members. Very, very good discussion. Very, very good board to work with. And they, and they were under some pressure and some time to get that to print. So I'd like to personally thank Tom Hurley and Emily Martin, who stepped up. They don't have a clerk at this time. So there's, there's a lot of stuff that goes into, behind the curtain, if you will, to get the, get the warrant article ready for town meeting. And between Tom Hurley and Emily, we were able to get that to the printer on, on Friday. So, looked to have it in the homes two weeks before the October 3rd, 23rd town meeting, special town meeting. So, yeah.
Yep, that's good. And anything in particular from this board?
When is the proof due back, Emily? Is this week?
Yes.
So you'll circulate that to those of you who need to come back?
As I have it.
Okay. The one.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, you go ahead.
I just want to ask one question before you. Is this something like we have to go to bid every year, like the warrant? Does it cost that much money that requires an RFP, or is it?
It used to go out to bid.
Every three years, and it's due this summer.
Okay. Sorry, that's, that was my only question.
The one thing that I think we need to pursue with the warrant committee is the signed by law and the issue of the appeal to the, the warrant committee voted to recommend that it, the appeal go to the Board of Appeals. I mean, Chairman, from what I understand, Chairman Leonard, maybe you talked with Dave.
Yeah, so he, he has thought that it's best that it stay in our hands, you know, for a multitude of reasons. You know, they, the way they vote, they typically have to vote three to nothing on. And I think that, you know, we are out there working with the community, the businesses, and we talk to the residents. The residents come in, give us input. And there's a little bit more flexibility for us to understand the basic need, because some of those needs can change. So, so yeah, Chairman Leonard would like it to stay with the Board of Selectmen.
I, I agree with that. I know that we had talked previously, last summer, we were very much in favor of it going to the Board of Appeals, because it's more on the line of work that they do. But I think, from what Bill Clark had said a while back also, the Board of Appeals just believes they have a very busy caseload.
They do.
And they don't want to take more of these appeals on. But, you know, I think what your point too, David, was important, that it's the same as the use variance with the Board of Appeals last week. They denied it because that developer never talked to the Selectmen, never talked to the planning board, the planning staff, anybody. Just came in and brought this into the Board of Appeals, and they were not going to make a decision to issue a variance on a change that big and that impactful on the square. So it's probably the same view that really the Selectmen would be the right board to override.
And I agree with that. You know, at the end of the day, I think that when you really think about it, and think of all the reasons why it makes most sense, I, I do agree that it should stay with us.
So right now, the warrant committee's recommending that it go to the Board of Appeals. So I think we'll have to either go in and ask them before town meeting to change their recommendation.
Sure.
If we're all in agreement on that. Are you in agreement?
Do we know why that, why, did this come from them, or did this come from the town committee? Where did the suggestion come from, to begin with?
The planning board wrote the article.
So they wrote it with the idea of, okay.
They gave two options. They, they said either, there's a paragraph of going to the Board of Appeals, and one to the Board of Selectmen. And the warrant committee recommended the Board of Appeals, even though the Board of Appeals would like us to take it on.
Right.
We'll keep it, rather.
Okay. So we'll have to deal with this at town meeting, though, not at the warrant committee, though.
Well, preferably before, to get them to change their recommendation.
And they still do that?
Yes.
Okay.
If not, and if they don't, we can still ask town meeting to do it. I'd like to defer a little bit to Chairman Leonard on this, especially based on their caseload.
I agree, 100%, yeah.
I'll find out.
Yep. Okay. So we'll try to get in there, at one of the future warrant committee meetings, to see if we can make a change, if, if they're acceptable to it.
I believe they were gonna meet the second week of October.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Okay.
George, the chair is traveling. But their intention was, and Tom Hurley brought it up, that they should meet prior to the town meeting. So.
Great. Hopefully, we can get in there then.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any other articles to discuss?
I don't know of any other.
I'll page with chapter 13.
It's been recommended for further study.
Yeah.
So what they did is, there's no change before town meeting, that's what it's gonna be?
Yeah. The town, I'm sure the town government study committee is, you know, I know they're reviewing.
Right. They're sorry, okay.
Yeah. I think they submitted a couple changes, but just.
Nothing happened?
No.
No.
Okay. Okay. We're moving on to item number seven. We have an approval of a one-day liquor license to use this estate.
I'll make that motion. Approval of one-day liquor license for the use of this estate at 1424 Canton Avenue, for its beauty and power, embrace and abandonment of modern design in America's gilded age lecture, on Wednesday, September 27th, 2017, from 6:30 to 8:30, and for its elegance and aspiration, money, taste, and jewelry in America's gilded cage, on Thursday, September 28th, from 6:30 to 8:30.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item eight is the approval of Celebrate Milton proclamation. The 24th Annual Celebrate Milton is being held at Pierce Middle School on Sunday, October 1st, from 12 to 4 p.m. The Board of Selectmen commemorate the event with a proclamation. It's always a fabulous event. You know, you've got, you've got people from all over town in groups that are so vigorously about what they're, they're doing in town and showing it off. It's just great. Last year was a real treat. Unfortunately, I'm gonna be out of the country this year, so I won't be able to attend if, I'm not sure if, okay, great. I don't return back till the 3rd. But it's, it's a great one. So we have a motion before us.
I'll move to be a proven sign of proclamation commemorating the 24th Annual Celebrate Milton on Sunday, October 1st, 2017.
Selectmen.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item number nine is approval of the JetBlue letter. The board previously sent a letter to all the major airlines that fly the Airbus A320s into Logan, in request the installation of vortex generators. For those of you at home that don't know what a vortex generator is, it's about a $5,000 cost to an airline. And it, it's basically almost a silencer that's, that's put on the jet engines. And it's something that, you know, this board and Airplane Advisory Committee knows would dramatically help reduce the noise, noise, you know, from our two highways that fly above us. At any rate, JetBlue had replied to the, to our previous letter, but there's been no further communication since. Therefore, this board is sending another letter to revisit the topic with JetBlue.
Quite a CC list on the letter.
Starts with President Trump. It does.
Quite a CC list.
We may be, we may be fired. I am, you know.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the letter to JetBlue, approval of it, no, I just jumped it in. Yes, I'll make a motion to approve that JetBlue letter.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to say that, I said this earlier, you know, this is something that I really had a little involvement in prior to coming on this board. And the two of you do a lot of work. I spent the weekend, most of Saturday, at an event at Marina Bay at the mouth of the Napaunts River. And I was not surprised by the emails that I saw going around, because it was nonstop. And, and it was one after another, on a beautiful day with very little wind. And many people, if they're not affected by this, they don't understand it. And you couldn't buy a car from a car dealership without, without all the EPA, without all, you know, you just couldn't get something as simple as a $5,000 piece of equipment that would really cut the noise in these big malls. These aren't, these aren't older planes. These are new. JetBlue's a relatively new company. They're not paying air mode, you know. They've been around forever.
It's the, but they call it the A320 series, and Andy Schmidt's gonna.
Yeah. And in this, and in that letter, and to your point, Richard, so they're retrofitting some of their newer planes. But from 2014 back, they haven't done so. So they call themselves a leader in the industry. And yet, you know, they sound somewhat of, somewhat hypocritical, because they're really not advancing some of the older ones that might be even noisier.
Isn't it less than a third? From what I read?
That's correct.
On their fleet, yeah.
Less than a third of their fleet. And they say that they're, they're leaders in their industry. So what does that tell you about their industry? It's disturbing. You know, just last night, I was, I was, I was throwing the ball out in my backyard with my, my sons. And about 6:40, I called Michael this morning about, at 6:40, we couldn't believe the noise of a plane coming that was going just, just over us. It was the lowest plane I have ever seen go through Milton. It was a JetBlue plane, so I immediately went in, filed a, a noise complaint, and explained, it was, it was like you could see the people in there. And it was, I wrote in my noise complaint, it couldn't have been 750 feet high. You know, you know, whether you're on, on the west side of Milton or on the east side of Milton, these are affecting all the town. And, you know, my kids even said, oh my God, that, that is the lowest plane I've ever seen. So that's not healthy. You know, that's unhealthy for anyone. And, you know, we're gonna have to continue to push hard on this, this issue. It's, it's an issue that our Airplane Noise Advisory Committee has worked really hard on. They've given a ton of volunteer hours. They should be commended. Katie, as our liaison, you've worked tremendously hard. We appreciate that. But, you know, it's gonna be a marathon. And, you know, letters like these make a difference, I believe, because we're continuing to apply the pressure, and we're building a large case for ourselves. And.
And this letter helps everybody, too. You know, if they, if JetBlue goes ahead and does this.
It does.
It helps a lot of other communities as well.
And that's, that's really our goal now. It's a collective goal to reduce, you know, the burden that we've all, we're all facing in the entire metro Boston area. And I think that, you know, that could be said for any other, any other city in America. Everybody's seeing this now with this new GPS.
The last, it's not, not only that day, but the last six days have been very tough with airplane noise. You've had some very long periods of it. So it's been an awful stretch. And they're still going, as of coming in here tonight, so.
Is JetBlue one of the main, one of the top carriers out of Logan?
Yes.
There you go.
And we should thank Andy Schmidt, the Chair of the Committee. He wrote this letter for us. So thank you, thank Andy for doing this letter.
I saw the email, too, about reaching out to the governor. It wasn't a bad idea. Because he hasn't really said much about this. I mean, Congressman Lynch, Rep. Stiss.
You know, we attended, Andy and I, along with Amory Fagan and Cindy Christensen, about a little over a year ago, attended a meeting with Tom Glenn and the Massport staff with Mindy Darbelauf, who is the Deputy Chief of Staff for the Governor. She heard it firsthand. And, you know, she's a resident, and to her, to her credit, she stood right up and said, this is unacceptable. You know, so, yeah, we haven't had any follow-up since. But I think that administration is well aware of the impacts. And we have someone like Mindy who would advocate on our behalf. But, but not just for us, but I think for anyone who would be under the circumstance. But yes, you know, I, I think that, I think we always have to look, like people look to us to help. We have to continue to look for people above us in places that can, can move the needle a little bit more to help us, too. So, no question. Okay, so we have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. The next item is approval of the airplane noise monitor purchase. At our September 6 meeting, the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee recommended the purchase of two noise monitors to capture objective data related to airplane noise. We were receptive to this suggestion. However, we did not, we weren't able to really get it advertised on the agenda for approval. So we, we have approval this evening. One thing before we get into this, I didn't, did we get any feedback from Nancy? We were looking to get some.
We did, yeah. I thought that was forwarded around to everybody.
Okay, I, I didn't see it.
It was an email from, from Carrie's North, who got her comment from her, and she was supportive of.
Good, okay. I just wanted to, just to ensure that, because I somehow missed that one. You know, we have a million coming today.
I know.
Every once in a while, we do miss, we are human here.
It's never a dull moment, really, emails.
Right. Okay, so we have a motion.
I'll move that we approve the request from the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee to purchase two recommended airplane noise monitors and associated equipment.
Second.
Any discussion? I, I would hope, you know, that these monitors, I just, I'm speaking just as my opinion only, would be, I don't know, moved around to certain areas of the town to appease, you know, all parts of the town that are affected. Because, you know, there is a visual now path which affects other people, not just in 4R, but 4L. And so, you know, that's just one thing that I'd, I'd hope that would be looked at, which I'm probably, you know, preaching to the choir, you know, more than likely it would be.
Michael, will this require an RFP, or is this like a sole source, is there?
Sole source, yes. It's, I think they were $1,200 each.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item 11. So is approval of Traffic Commission recommendations. In preparation for the reorganization of Traffic Commission, Secretary Ian Condon has reached out to us regarding a recommendation that was not previously heard by the board. These recommendations come from the Commission's October 21st, 2014 meeting, in Iran for approval as a housekeeping measure.
So I'll read the proposed motion. And the first motion is to approve the following recommendations of the Traffic Commission's October 21st, 2014 meeting, under Article 8, Section 12, specifically Ridge Road, to install a four-way stop sign at the intersection of Ridge Road and Henley Road pending a traffic warrant analysis to meet the Mass Unified Traffic Code requirements. Do you want to vote or want to tell me? Or do you want to read them all?
No, go through all of them.
Next one, Article 8, Section 24, Brookhill Road, to install a Doonan at 7 and 9, Monday through Friday, on Brookhill Road at the intersection of Canton Avenue, with the stipulation that snow operations will be allowed at all times in both directions. And on Morton Road, to install a Doonan at 7 and 9, Monday through Friday, sign on Morton Road at the intersection of Canton Ave, with the stipulation, snow operations will be allowed at all times in both directions.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Boards and committees appointment. We have the Historical Commission.
I'll move that we reappoint Stephen V. O'Donnell of 65 Hillsview Road, Dudley H. Ladd of 198 Randolph Avenue, and William S. Mullin of 36 Central Street, Elliot Street, to the Historical Commission to serve through September 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next board and committee appointment is Payment and Lure Taxes Committee.
I'll make a motion to appoint Michael D. Dennehy of 525 Canton Avenue, David T. Burns of 24 Garfield Road, James Henderson of 121 Athens Street, Michael Zulis of 69 Fairbanks Road, and Matthew Kesswick of 76 Buckingham Road, to the Payment and Lure Taxes, also known as the Pilot Committee, to serve through September of 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for serving for us on that committee, David.
I'll tell you, that's.
Behind it, I think.
Yeah, you know what? We're, we're getting a lot done. And, you know, our team of Matt Kesswick and Mike Zulis have been active in meeting with, with the nonprofits. And so we're moving right along. So at some point, we will have them in for an update on a future agenda item.
Good.
Okay. Town Administrators Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board, for having me tonight. I just want to start off by thanking the public safety teams in our town. We all see what's going on in the world. There's weather-related issues, there's political issues. But I think what we have in this town and, and what we have in, in each of the people that put on that uniform every day needs to be appreciated, especially in times like this, when there's so much uncertainty and anxiety in the world, and divisiveness, right? I know that's a big word these days. But I just, the, the teams of people that are out there as first responders in this town, whether it's a police, police officer, or a fireman, or, you know, or phalanx ambulance. I witnessed Paige Appolito from our office was in a little fender bender on Canton Ave a week ago. And just, I ended up on the scene. And just to see the work that was done there. And a lot of that work gets unnoticed. And I think nowadays, people just highlight some of the negative stuff that you see from, from people in law enforcement and public safety. So I, I really need to highlight in my 10 months here, what a great job, and how pleased I am to be working with, with all those groups in the town. So I just want to extend a thank you to them. That's probably long overdue for me. But I know you were in receipt of a letter, David, from a.
Yeah. And if I make this ad, that we had a teacher from the school department who was traveling in and got in a fender bender on, it might have been Route 24. And one of our firefighters on the way into work stopped just, and just by chance, out of the, out of the, you know, kindness of his heart, and, and the role that he plays every day, to see, how's everything going? How can I help? You know? And so that's just, you know, it gives you, gives you an indication of the commitment to the public servants and the public safety in this town, you know, to go a level above when it, you know, not necessarily affected them internally, it just so happened, coincidental, that they were both from Milton.
That's a good story. That's good news.
I'm gonna jump ahead, if it's all right with you, and play off your story. But so you always talk about, because obviously I came from there, so I have a understanding. But you always talk about the quality of people that come from this town. So 25 years ago, as a young policeman, I responded to a call to the bowling league that you belong to, in the basement of Cunningham, where men's bowling was playing. And one of the members, who happened to be our building inspector, suffered a cardiac arrest, and was full cardiac arrest in the floor, in front of all his friends. His name was Malcolm Kent. He also happened to be one of my Boy Scout leaders. Walked in, obviously, when people see this, you know, they're in shock, this is someone that they've known. And there was a young 16-year-old boy who was there setting the pins. And he was futilely working, doing CPR on Malcolm by himself. And we took over. And I think, in my mind, I don't know if he came in the ambulance with, I actually went in the back of the ambulance. I don't remember whether he came with us or not. But I never forgot how courageously this kid acted. And he had been a Boy Scout. And I wrote a letter to the board at the time, and at the American Red Cross. And he was recognized, not just by this town, but by the Red Cross, for the, even though Malcolm didn't make it, but his quick action, trying to save his life. He went on to college to become a paramedic himself and enter the fire service. Both of you, all of you know his parents very well. His parents are Mr. and Mrs. Joe Murphy. Joe being on the housing committee for years. And last Friday, their son, Steven, was appointed Fire Chief.
Right.
In the fire department. And in his interview, they brought up his actions when he was 16 years old.
Incredible.
And that goes to like, the quality of people that come out. And so many aspects like that. Giving back, responders going outside and above. And it's funny, every time I've ever seen his father in all these years, we always talk about Steven that day. So.
It's amazing.
I don't know if they're watching, but I know they're very proud.
Glad to share that.
Congratulations to the Murphy family. That's wonderful news.
Yeah. And you trained all the officers in town. Well, it's indicative of, I mean, it's, every day I see it, and I hear stories from people thanking our public safety people. So I, I really need to say that. It's probably long overdue, like I said. So, we mentioned the Traffic Commission. There's a transition meeting tomorrow night. They have a full agenda. I think there's probably 16 or 17 things that they're looking, is it Wednesday night? Okay. Sorry, yeah, the 27th.
Wednesday night.
Yeah. Wednesday, the 27th, at 6:00 p.m. Full agenda. At that time, Chief King will, he's bringing Chase Berkeley in. They anticipate the AG's office signing off on the, on the town meeting article around October 12. So this will probably be the last meeting for that group, as it currently exists. And they're gonna kind of pass the torch off to the next group. But as we talk about traffic and, and, you know, volume in the town, this, this commission is more and more important every day. So, thanks to Chief King, as he chairs his last meeting Wednesday.
Lucky him.
And Condon, I think he did, yeah. He's not getting away, though. He still has to be there.
Still member, right?
It's a thankless, it's really, it's a very difficult, zero-budget. Chase is gonna find out when he looks at this.
Well, speaking of that, Mike, I'm glad you brought up the AG. So we're expecting him to act on that by law fairly soon, which means we'll have two more appointments to that committee for citizens. So we do have a few applications. Anyone who's interested in serving on the Traffic Commission should fill out a volunteer form and submit it to the office.
The Chair, to be able to have some say. The Chair, let the Chair, let Chase have some say. Because you definitely want to have people there who are gonna be able to contribute and have some type of expertise, because it's just such a critical role with the.
Well, we look for some expertise when we put Lee Tomer on the committee. I think he was a good appointee.
He was.
Yeah.
Very good. The long-awaited LED retrofit conversion started Friday. They were working the streets off of Pleasant from Cunningham School towards Tedeschi's, or what will be 7-Eleven. This morning, they were on Randolph Ave. Not an easy process to shut Randolph Ave down to one lane. But I think they did a great job with the help of MPD. They did the outbound side in the morning, so the commute wasn't affected, and did the inbound side. So I'm very curious what people think of the lights. Again, I've said, it takes[1691.50] said, it takes a little while to warm up to them, but feel free to email me, mdennehy@townofmilton.org. I think, and I'm going to travel Randolph Ave after we leave here, it should add some visibility to the road.
It has a brightness to it.
Yeah, it throws, it casts a larger light than, you know, some of these, they took down and I went down to the yard on Friday to look at the stuff that came down and it looks like a MASH unit, you know what I mean? Stuff that's been up on the poles for years and years and years. So just the fact that there's a new light up there, never mind how efficient it is, should help. So, Siemens is providing four crews a day to us, each crew doing about 40 lights a day. So we look to have all, the entire town retrofit before the clock to go back on November 5. So Siemens has been very responsive.
That's terrific. Well, I think we have to give Mike Dennehy some credit for that because that's an idea that I, pretty sure, Mike, you brought that idea forward and came up the creative way to fund it through the Capital Stabilization Fund. That was a good.
And saved even more money, we found out, than we would have.
Yeah, when the bids came in, Siemens committed a pretty competitive bid, so another good story.
Well, so congratulations.
Thank you. No, I appreciate the acknowledgement. And again, it's, you know, I told Jack Calabro that we're making a statue of him now. We're not sure what we're going to put it in town, but a lot of good work going on out there. Just an update, some people may or may not have seen it. Mattresses and box springs are becoming a problem for our disposal site. So there's a new program that we've announced. Mattresses and box springs cannot go out on the curb on your regular trash day anymore. Instead, they want you to call Public Works at 617-898-4900 by Friday at noon to get it collected the following Tuesday. So we're only going to pick them up on Tuesday. They need to be scheduled. It's by appointment only. It's two stickers on the curb, or you can bring them to the recycling day, which is the first Saturday of every month, and it's just one sticker there. Most of the furniture outlets take them now. I had some mattresses delivered and.
They'll take them back.
They take them back for a fee, yeah. But if you do need to leave them curbside, just call Public Works the Friday before and we'll get you on a schedule. The disposal sites are really having a tough time handling these things and processing them. So we appreciate.
Well, again, I don't want to sound like I'm pandering here, but that, you know, I think all of us know what a headache that issue became for a few weeks there with the DPW and the disposal company. But that's another area where I think the Town Administrator really did a good job and made this transition look easy. But there was a lot of work and a lot of phone calls involved in that. So congratulations to the Town Administrator for coming up with a good solution to that problem, which could have been a much bigger problem.
Appreciate it. And we know it's a little more inconvenient, but it's just the way we have to, we have to do things going forward.
Just to follow, I don't think most people realize what he could hit with, that, you know, our contractual, and our recycler, you know, both are like putting a gun to your head saying, "I'm going to charge you, you know, X amount of money."
And you've got 30 days.
"So one night, I'm going to pick up your trash." And it would have been an awful ugly thing to see trash saying, "Well, you know how it is when it's an extra day here or a half a day to never mind, you know, a week." And especially things like that, you know, big things that just so, as I said to you, we needed this. Go negotiate, you know, you did a good job. It could have cost us a lot more.
You did. You know, snow and trash, those are two big items, aren't they?
The Times said, you know, people paying more for trash, but they don't understand what, you know, how, they don't understand how much, how hard it is to deal with trash 10/25. You know, we just throw our stuff away, even if you were, and even recycling, people don't understand that. We were one of the first communities to recycle. Now everyone recycles. And so the benefits of recycling aren't what they were 10 or 15 years ago because everyone's competing for recycling. And so.
Well, I appreciate that. Yeah, we still have to negotiate the last 21 months of the contract, the current contract. We want to keep the hauler's contract, the green trucks, and no one's going to be affected. Your trash will still be collected the same way. I need to stress that to people. We're working on the last 21 months of that contract with the disposal site currently to come up with a price that, you know, won't add a burden onto the hauler as well. So, which leads me to my next thing. Town accountant asked all of the town departments to come up with some capital improvement asks for the year. She's still collecting that information, but just having learned what I have in the last month or so with the trash industry, I think we're going to see a large spike in the disposal costs for trash.
Going forward.
Going forward. I think we need to, we're a great community, like you said, in recycling. We recycle about 50, 55% of our material, which is historic. I mean, when we were in Boston, we got it from 20 to 22%. And to move that needle was, it's heroic. So I think it's time to entertain possibly providing recycled cars for our residents, if we can come up with a solution. And new Chief Procurement Officer, Arlene Zuniga, and our new environmental coordinator are working through some grants that other towns have used, where we would actually provide that 64-gallon wheeled, littered car to everyone. The more room you have in that car, the more you're going to recycle, right? And when you're a pay-as-you-throw program or community, that even adds to it. So I think with the way the industry's going, we need to stay ahead of that. And we're exploring some options as to what it would take to put, you know, 9,000 cars out on the street. The hauler is.
Prentree does it.
Prentree does it, yeah.
There are a number of towns that surround us. Westwood does it as well. There are a number of them that do it. And I think that it's very effective. Like you said, we're at 55%. We could go to 70%, which is just, it could be unbelievable.
Yeah. And when you have the disposal sites commanding a higher price for that tonnage, the best thing you can do is recycle more and not send it to that facility. So it's something we're working on. We're in the early stages of it, but something that I'd like to accomplish if we could.
Great.
Household hazardous waste day, the Stay on the Public Works theme was a huge success. We had 228 cars turn through the line on the 16th. I was going to talk about Celebrate Milton, but you guys already approved it this Saturday, Sunday at noon to 4:00 behind Pierce. I think that's it. I have a couple of future agenda items we can get to afterwards, but.
Great.
Yeah. And thank you for all your support. I meant that, the first 10 months here have been great, that, all the dialogue. And I think what went on here tonight was a healthy dialogue. And everybody was able to voice their opinion about what they think about the East Milton Tech project. And, you know, now that the clock is ticking and we need to get those documents into the hand of Mastod and FHWA so that we secure that money in these times. I think this discussion here, both with me individually and as a group here tonight, have been very productive. So I want to thank you each year for that.
We appreciate it. Okay, Chairman's report. Let's see, so I had a nice conversation today with a woman from V-Bikes. It's a bike sharing program, you know, a lot of success in Boston and some other places. A lot of communities are starting to take part in it. And so basically what it would be is, in a small-scale effort, just a small-scale introductory effort, is potentially having, you know, some bikes available at some of our train stops or at schools for people to use at a very low cost, like I think it's like a dollar an hour. So anyway, after going through a lot of this discussion with her, I obviously recommended that she talk to Lee Toma, resident bike expert in the Bicycle Advisory Committee, because I think that they would be able to best vet this and see whether or not it'd be worthy. Go to study and come back to us and fill us in on what they gathered. But it's, you know, we've got the, we've got the Napa, we've got that nice BikeWay, Travelway. We've got these great bike lanes in town. We've got, you know, a lot of, a lot of people who might use bikes for accessibility to get different places who don't have a car. It might make it easier for people who don't have a car. So, you know, I think it's something worthy of investigating anyway.
Is this similar to what, like, is in Boston, the great?
Hubway.
Same thing?
Same idea, yeah.
Did he have any ideas, or did she have any ideas where?
Yeah, you know, she just brought up a quick idea, you know, saying, you know, some of the train stops, you know, where people get off the trolley and can move. But also, you know, you could incorporate, you know, she's going to Waltham tomorrow to meet with the mayor and agree to a deal related to not only their municipality, but with the colleges. So, and we've got Curry College. There's a number of things, you know. I think that, you know, there's some naturals here with us being so close to Boston too, for people who could want to commute and drop the bike off. And so we'll see where it goes.
That might be something, David, to bring up too at the joint meeting with the Master Plan Committee about the Wharf, because we've had some talk about maybe bike racks down in that area.
Absolutely right.
That would be a good topic.
It could play a role in the East Milton Square as well.
Yeah, that's true.
But it was encouraging. It's good that people are looking at us too, as towns that they'd want to, you know, to work with. That's about all I have right now. Probably have some future agenda items as we move forward. Katie?
Just two quick things. One is I went to the Eagle Scout Ceremony a couple of weeks ago and just wanted to congratulate Nicholas Daley, Caleb Farwell, and Matthew Tibbetts. It was a really nice ceremony for them and well-deserved. Secondly, I wanted to publicly recognize and thank, and I'm sure we all do want to thank them, two people who have given an awful lot of service to this town and unfortunately have relocated out of town for work reasons, just very recently. Emily Keyes Innis and Ewan Innis, both served as.
As soon as you said it, I knew who you were talking about.
Both served as Chair of the Warrant Committee. First time we've had a husband and wife serving as Chair of the Warrant Committee. Obviously at different times over maybe eight or 10 years apart, but both put in that time and really did an awful lot of work for the town. Ewan served on the Town Government Study Committee for a while when the committee was first formed. And Emily spent 10 years on the planning board and also was really the driving force behind the Master Plan. She was Chair of the Master Plan Committee and moved that forward. And that's something that the town's going to be living with for the next so many years. So they both, both were town meeting members. And I think Milton is going to miss them and miss their contributions. And I just wanted to publicly thank them and wish them well in their, in their, at their new home outside of Milton.
They already moved.
They have already moved. So, but they gave so much to the town and it's, Milton, like a lot of towns, is one where volunteers really give an awful lot of time and contribute to the functioning of town government and especially town meeting. So both did a lot and they will be missed.
Emily was very involved next door for a long time, first parish.
Yes.
She did a lot with Diane.
She did. And also at Fuller Village. So they both did a lot for Milton. So thank you.
Absolutely. What a good time. Richard?
So just a couple. First, I did meet with Chase Berkeley as part of the, in the 350th Committee. There is a legacy gift clock that will be going through the square. Hopefully, we, it's going to, that's where it's going to go once the project's done. The second thing I do is I want to publicly thank DA Mike Morrissey. Some of you may have, I'm sure we all read a case, was actually an excellent piece of police work by Sergeant Kristen Murphy, involved the gentleman who came to Milton High School with a loaded gun about two or three years ago and tried to get in. And we live in a time today, as you said, Michael, where unfortunately, violence, and particularly school violence, is all too common. And sadly, the SJC ruled against that search as being unreasonable. And to quote, a very close friend of mine, Chief, Chief from Chief Brooks, who's involved very much in the Innocent Images Project, he said, "That decision took the reasonable, the word reasonable out of reasonableness." And the dissenting decision was the one that I took the most knowledge of and really talked about exactly those things, the dangers what else to face. And I thought it was very courageous and a bold rule by Mike Morrissey to ask him to reconsider this because that's a really important case. That was a very good piece of police work. And I was very pleased. And I didn't even speak to him about it, but I was very pleased to see that he's decided to appeal that. And good luck to his, he has some great people working from. So hopefully they prevail on that because that's an important case. It really was.
That's it? Yeah, I agree. No question. I think that, you know, the information we got from Chief King too as well is just, they did a great job, the Police Department that day, protecting the students. Okay, so says the speak, we didn't have anyone, so there is no response tonight. Future agenda items, one, as I mentioned earlier, I'd like to, I'd like to have the Pilot Committee in, give us an update. You know, we'll probably be scheduling a pilot meeting, committee meeting at some point in the near future. So maybe we could get that on the agenda and then talk and then come in here to see the Board. Maybe give an update on our status in Ula and, you know, where we are with that going forward. And we have a Capital Committee meeting coming up, our first one of the year. So be able to fill you guys in on some of those items.
October 17.
That's right.
Great.
What are they preparing? So are they doing contingent or not? What type, what are they doing?
No, no.
I'm talking about 19.
One budget this year.
I'm already going out a year.
One budget this year.
One budget this year. And then same for, are you looking at for 19 as well? Just one budget?
Yeah, so.
Lucky for them. Lucky for you.
Yeah, the Warrant Committee. Although, like I said, there was a healthy discussion on the warrant articles. There's some very good questions. The water article that we talked about, there were some people asked, you know, "Will there be sticker shock two years from now if we keep the rates flat this year and we use some of that surplus money?" Which is a great question, you know what I mean? Are we just pushing the problem down the road? But it was a very prudent and wise decision and very thought-out decision to take some of that surplus money. But the questions that were asked by this Warrant Committee were, they're a very cognizant group. You know, they asked a lot of questions of Blue Hill's regional staff that were there that presented, you know, "What's a building look like? What would it cost to build a new building?" All the what-ifs or, you know, some other scenarios that might take place instead of the capital funding they're looking for. So, very healthy discussion. But the Capital Improvement Committee, they'll hear all these asks on the 17th for the first time and start to prioritize some of them. Because obviously, there's some stuff in the pipeline from last year as well.
Right, right. Right. There's some multi, there's still.
Yeah, they submit a multi-year project, yeah.
Multi-year projects. Any items?
Just the Town Administrator and I talked about having the Police Chief into a future agenda in an executive session to talk about deployment of personnel, security personnel. So I'd like to put that.
He's confirmed that. Yep, he'll be here on the 10th.
Great, thank you.
Oh, great. Excellent. Okay, Richard, anything?
I'm good.
Okay.
I have two.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can we revisit the social media and vehicle use policy if we have time? I know there were a lot of edits going back and forth and each of you spent a lot of time looking at these for the third or fourth time. So I'd appreciate that if we could get that on a future agenda. And then the Stormwater Fee Advisory Committee, we meet for the third time tomorrow night. Chase Berkeley and myself, and then it's Resident Tom Hurley, Jay Funling, and Jerry Burke. And it's been unbelievably productive. It's just the discussion that we're talking about. So tomorrow night, we're going to bring a representative from MAPC and the Ponton River Watershed to go back and look what brought them to here. We know that the warrant article in May increased the stormwater enterprise roughly $80,000. So I would like to come back to this Board on the 10th and set, make our recommendation to set the rates for FY '18 at that time.
Good.
Yeah, should have a pretty productive dialogue tomorrow night as well.
Has there been a redraft of the vehicle use policy? I don't remember seeing an updated draft. I know we saw, I know there were comments that everybody was sending, but I don't know if I've seen.
I don't think so. I haven't looked at it for a minute.
Paige has been receiving everything and kind of tracking changes on the document. I'll check with her tomorrow, but.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we'll have a good meeting on the 10th with a lot of, we'll make a lot of decisions, I hope. Okay, so I'll make a motion to adjourn.